Okay.
I don't know why it must be.
And stuff and I said, you know. Now that I know that I'm pulling out of the dapper just exactly what you're talking about. Yeah. Time will be a barmy.
Not yet. Here we go. No.
Oh, my God.
Look, what is this? Why did this come up twice?
Two days in a row, two games in a row she scores a winner. That was phenomenal.
He's gonna whine.
Here we go. Technology's great when it works.
I ain't one, no, no.
Oh.
Okay.
We'll call a meeting to order, please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, Republic which stands nation under God. Thank you all for coming this evening. Ms. Wilczynski is excused. Please join me in a moment of silence for Christine A. Maglion, who attended schools in the North Syracuse Central School District, and Jacqueline Taylor Abreal, a 1944 graduate of the district and a retired employee as well. Thank you. To A., presentation, 2018-19 proposed budget presentation, Mr. Key.
Well, good evening. I'm happy to report that, as most people know, we had an on-time budget in Albany and therefore we have our final New York State School Aid numbers, which will be a key topic of discussion tonight and the implications they had on the deficit that we talked about at our last budget. You'll notice that many of the agenda items are the same and I think, I think you'll notice that many of the slides are the same. And as we did last time, Annette, Dan, and I, and Jason will kind of work together to, to present the information to you and we encourage you to stop us and ask questions along the way. Our final revenue number is $163,200,980. That's slightly higher than the last time we spoke to you, largely due to the fact that we, we got more revenues from our state aid than, than we originally had, had thought we were gonna get. This is the, the comparison of the current year's budget, 1718, to the 1819 budget. And I'll just point out that our general aid, that's all of our state aid excluding the building aid, is up about 3.06 percent or almost $1.9 million. We're, we're still leaning on fund balance. As you can see, our fund balance is about $2.4 million for the 1819 budget, jumping back up to pilots. Our pilot revenue is, is down. That's just a function of the different pilot agreements that are in place. And, and then the rest of this has not changed materially. Building aid's the same as it was, tax levy is the same, and I'll, I'll cover that in a moment. But let's talk about the state aid in a little more detail. And I hope you can read this, it's, I got it about as big as I could on this slide. So, the, the first column is the approved budget, the one that we got in our budget runs this weekend. The second column is the executive budget, that's the, the governor's original budget. So, we did get $188,000 more in foundation aid than the governor had originally projected, which, which was okay. Actually, we, we kind of were hopeful that we would get more. We were pleasantly surprised that our excess cost aid went up over $500,000, and I should explain that. As you folks know, we have a large special ed population that we're servicing and we go through a process called stacking. We stack those, those students, listing all the services that we provide. And we get some excess cost aid above a base. So, the, just rough numbers, we spent about $30,000 on a student, we don't get any additional aid, but once you get over 30, you get, you get some additional aid. And so, as you can imagine, with state systems, they're catching up to all the stacks that we've submitted and they have a better, better handle on the number today than they did in January when the, the governor's budget was done. And the governor's budget probably pulled numbers from, you know, maybe a month or, or more before January. So, that's a big one, $555,000. Minor adjustments in hardware and technology, software, library, and textbook. But we got a big, we got a, a big adjustment in transportation as well. And again, we, I think I've explained to the board that we always haircut our transportation aid that we get from Albany. We did that in the executives' budget and the approved budget. And that's because when we do our budget, we've got estimates for fuel and different things in there that may or may not, you know, actually pan out. And so, what they do is they look at our budget for each subsequent year and they base the aid on that. And, and so, to the extent that we have any favorable variances in transportation, it results in an overstatement of the following year's aid. And I hope I didn't lose you with that, but at the end of the day, we picked up $210,000 more in transportation aid and we're happy about that. BOCs, the same thing, that's for, as many of you know, we've been using BOCs for a lot of services and the COSs that we've submitted. Everything's been processed and therefore our number that's in the approved budget is a little more accurate than the BOCs aid number that was in our, the governor's budget. No change in building aid. So, overall, our total state aid is up about 1.5%. Now, our universal pre-K is included in that, that number hasn't changed in years. So, it's about 1.4% or a little over $1 million. And so, we're, we're thankful for that and that, that clearly plugged the deficit we were dealing with at the last meeting. I won't take you through any more detail on foundation aid, but it's still an issue and it's something that we, you know, that ultimately we gotta deal with it. Until this issue's dealt with, it really, it makes a lot of our state aid formulas, the biggest state aid formulas meaningless. But in the 1819 school year, for next year, we're still $10.6 million underfunded in terms of foundation aid. And I, I have no idea where this is going. But this, these are the formulas that are on the books and we're being underpaid versus those formulas. Tax cap, no changes here. We're looking at a 2.94% increase in the tax levy or $2.5 million. That's about $70 before STAR. And I should emphasize, I had a funny conversation with somebody recently, because people I think would love it if we could tell them the after STAR number. But it's a little tricky, everybody has, you know, there's basic STAR, there's senior STAR, there's, you know, I think there's three different levels of STAR and it's very hard for us to calculate that. So, before STAR, and everybody gets some level of STAR, it's gonna be $70. So, most taxpayers, if not all, are gonna experience something less than $70 on a $100,000 home. And here's the, here's our three towns. It's, it's worth explaining one more time that the town of Clay is not a full value assessment town. Assessments in about half the towns in New York State are not at full value. So, $100,000 house in, in Clay is assessed at $4,270 or thereabouts. And, and I should also just take this moment to remind you that the final assessments, that'll be the basis for the final tax bills, won't come out until this summer. So, I'll have a chart coming up that I'll show you again from last week, but it's worth just peeking at that again. But rest assured that whether you live in Cicero, Clay, or Salina, if you have a full value, everything's converted into full value with the goal that $100,000 house in all three towns pays the same amount in school taxes. And that's $2,436 again before STAR. And this is that chart we looked at last time. I think it's just helpful to note that we don't control the assessments, the assessments come out after the budget process. We do the best we can to, to estimate projected tax rates, but as a general rule, the rates that we project typically are lower than the rate that the taxpayer actually sees. So, going back to this slide where we said the rate was gonna be $24.36, it's likely, based on the assessments and the growth of our tax bases, President Shuster did such a good job last time explaining to us, that, that's likely gonna result in a lower rate than 24.36. This chart, thank you for the great feedback. We've had a chart like this in the past and you guys have kind of coached me to sort this. These are all 23 component school districts in our, in our BOCs. The numbers, albeit small at the top, are the, are the tax rates per $1,000 for, for each of the towns. And you'll see that North Syracuse is kind of right, that green bar kind of in the middle of the pack. The average for the entire group, including North Syracuse, is 2296 and the median's 2335. And, and the tax rate for the 17 school year was 2318. So, you know, we're kind of, kind of right in the middle of the pack. Proposed expenditures, I'm happy to say that our expenditures for this presentation equal our revenues at $163.2 million. Again, I've said this before, we're a people-based business, so the majority of our costs are people. And that's the most important thing we do, is put adults in front of children. One of the things I want to point out, that special project of $100,000, that's for security project. And we're gonna, I think at the next board meeting, the board will be approving the seeker for that and we're gonna do some additional work in our schools on, on another security project. We've been doing one each of the last several years. BOCs, we're, we're at $15.5 million in our BOCs. We don't have to finalize that budget for another couple of meetings here. But that's our, that's our, kind of the big pieces of our, of our expenditures. Comparing year to year, salaries up about 3.35%. Now, remember, our union contracts all have about a 3% increase. I'm happy to report that this budget does include some additional positions. It also includes the full year effect of positions that would've been hired during the 1718 school year. And, and we'll talk more about what those positions are. We've been doing very well with our benefits, modest increase there. Debt service, that's just a function of the, the debt that we have, those, that's our mortgage payment. BOCs is up about a million bucks. We've been doing a lot with BOCs, we continue to do so, whether it be from a technology perspective or in terms of servicing our special needs population. But our total expenditures are up 2.84%, same amount as our revenues are up.
So, one of the things we're very proud of in this proposed budget is the focus and the alignment to Vision 2020, which we kept in mind the whole time we were putting this together. So, what you're going to see is an increase in experiences and opportunities with, for students that align with our mission and our vision. And we'll be talking with you about expanded course options for students at the high school, upping the minimum credit for seniors at the high school. Also, staff increases to provide all junior high students the art, health, and family and consumer science and additional sections added to junior high science to reduce class size. We'll also be talking about continuing to monitor and stress our special education programs and increase the number of sections in core area subjects in order to maintain. Certainly, last but not least, resources that focus on safety, security, and social emotional well-being. So, moving on to expanded course options for students at the high school, Mr. Leclerc has worked with his departments and his staff to, get a few of the electives, you can see way over on the right, and replace them with several more electives that we feel are more pertinent and will be of greater interest to students with the expectation that it will help them to explore different areas of interest. They can find their passion and it will help them before they get to college to focus on something that they. Also allow seniors to. That it's up to six credits. And going along with that, currently, 1/3 of our high school students, our, our seniors either leave, either arrive late or leave early. And so, this will help increase scheduling flexibility as well as opportunities. I think that this will allow colleges to take a closer look at transcripts and, and see that rigor in our high school program. You'll notice today, tonight on some of these slides, we've included a little box that shows you exactly what the increase. And so, it's a full-time science and a full-time social studies teacher in order. The electives that we've talked about here.
So, at the junior high, trying to ensure that all students have the opportunity to take some of these elective courses, such as art, health, and family and consumer science, we are needing to increase the staffing by a little bit here and there, but this will allow for some flexibility and scheduling so that all students can take these subject area courses. Also, at the junior high, for science, living environment, class sizes, if we did not increase the FTE, would be too high. When you have a laboratory situation or science situation, you need to keep them reasonable, so that is increasing by .4.
The next couple of slides focus on our special education programs and as you're aware, we've worked really hard in the last two years with a focus on a more inclusive special needs students. The, we're gonna talk here about some staffing that we feel is appropriate at this point. However, we need to keep in mind that annuals are not completed and we often have to. Continue to monitor this and tweak it for the start of the school year as needed. At this point, we are building in a full-time teacher at Gillette, a full-time teacher at the junior high, and a full-time teacher at the high school. And overall, at the elementary, there's some shifting, but at this point, we think we one less special education teacher at the elementary. Overall, this budget proposal. By two full-time. The next slide indicates that although our enrollment has gone down over time, the, we've had an increase in the number and. Abilities and so you can see. Goes along when we think why the need to increase staff and, and programming in this area.
So, for those of you that have driven around the district, we do have some growth in the northern end and so we have some increased enrollment at Gillette Road Middle School. And because of that, we will need to increase our FTE for English, math, social studies, science, Spanish, and technology to the point of 1.2.
Regarding resources for safety, security, and social, social, emotional well-being, we have, we continue with our security projects. I mentioned the $100,000 in the upcoming plan. Over the spring break, they'll be completing the junior high entryway and over the summer, they'll be completing Roxborough's entryway. And we'll be looking at some security projects for next year, additional security projects for next year as well. We're planning some specific training opportunities for early next year to work with our staff on, on certain types of events. And we're also continuing our efforts to expand professional development to support social emotional well-being. We have, we're in conversations with Anadog County Sheriff's Department about adding another school resource officer. I know that you folks are aware, we had five at one time. We're hopeful that there'll be some additional grant or, or funding for officers. And we're in regular communication with Anadog County Sheriff's Department because we really feel a need to add one more school resource officer so that we'd have one in each of our secondary schools. And I want to emphasize that one thing that's great about the team we have now is that if we need somebody at one of the elementary schools, if there's any issues going on anywhere in the district, they, they're pretty mobile and they get to wherever we need them to be and are incredibly responsive. And then, in terms of the social emotional well-being piece, we're increasing half a school psychologist at Gillette Road Middle School and one at Roxborough Road Middle School.
The real point of pride for our district is, is the extensive and deep support that we provide our probationary teachers. To continue to support that program and put the absolute best teachers in front of our, our children as possible is we'll be expanding the consultant teacher program. As we've mentioned before, we're actually projected to have over 100 probationary teachers in the district. And that requires a lot of support, a lot of people to be part of that program. So, we're expanding it from six consultant teachers to eight for an net increase of two consultant teachers for next year.
So, in our world languages, as you know, we had finalizing, phasing out German and the person that was doing that job was at a .8. And so, since German is no longer, those students now will be taking either French or Spanish to the tune of a minus .2 loss in world languages.
This slide not only shows you the increases for a variety of reasons that we've shared with you tonight, but it also reflects some of the decreases that we have in various areas due to enrollment changes. And as Annette pointed out, we, we're constantly monitoring the needs of the special needs students and there's also, as you know, enrollment in the district is an ever-changing number. So, we'll be keeping an eye on things as we go forward if there are any other needs. If you were to go through this and add up all the pluses and minuses, we are increasing our overall staffing by a total of 5.0 positions next year compared to what we have this year.
This is a slide that you've seen before, I, I've talked about it enough probably. It's not something we're necessarily proud of, but we take all the revenues we get from state aid and all the revenues we get from the taxpayers and we, and we spend them on education. And our cost, our average spending per pupil is about 17.9 million, I'm sorry, $17,928. I wish it was 17 million, that'd be awesome. But the, these, this only includes general fund and special aid fund only, those expenses that directly support our students. Vehicles, we've done a, a really good job in this district of, of keeping our fleet reasonably current. It's reflected in our safety ratings. We've gotten excellent DOT inspection results and we've had a very safe fleet. And it has a lot to do with the quali, our mechanics do a wonderful job, our drivers take a great, take great care of their buses. And the board has authorized the purchase of, and the voters have supported, the purchase of new buses each year to keep the fleet reasonably current. And so, we're continuing with that in this, in this process. It's 14 buses and one delivery truck for a total of 15 vehicles at 1.4 million. Again, it's before STAR, the tax impact after transportation aid is about $1.82 for a $100,000 home. It's a, it's a great investment. If we let the fleet age too much, we'll spend far more than that in vehicle repairs and maintenance and decline safety for our students. Projected fund balance, so the only change in this slide, there's two changes in this slide. One is that our estimated appropriation to reduce the tax levy for 1819 is 2.4 million. That was a little higher than our last version, it was 2.7. And our budget is $163.2 million. So, we're looking at a projected fund balance at the end of this year at 3.33% below the 4% New York State recommends, but better than our last forecast and that, that's a good thing. No changes in reserves. We have, I know, $7.6 million seems like a lot of money, but when you think about all the properties where we're exposed to tax certiary or, you know, people contesting their assessments and, and frankly, getting some type of settlement in the process. We have 1,400 employees, so workman's comp is a big expenditure for us, lots of liabilities when you're running 11 schools. And that capital reserve has really been completely, you know, spoken for by the time we factor in our Bear Road project. So, and, and the roof project that's being done.
Hey, Don, can you go back to chart 28 for a second?
Which one?
28.
Yeah.
The variance in, in expenditures, that's a positive variance so far, is, what's, what's the probability of that changing?
Oh, you're running this one here?
Yeah, yeah, in 2018.
So, that's a great, great question. We, we did an expenditure freeze several months ago. And we, we typically are very fortunate in that, once we do an expenditure freeze, it generates, you know, a decent amount of money. That hasn't been figured into that 1.5 because we just don't know how much it is. But I, I will say at the same time, we're also trying to be thoughtful when, when people submit things that are gonna impact students directly. We're, we're approving those. Dan and I have looked at all these expenditures really closely and working with Annette to make sure that we're not cutting, cutting people too, too close as they come down the home stretch. But if, if, my opinion is that there will be a, a greater than $1.5 million variance in expenditures. However, we just don't know with New York State and the revenue piece, when we're gonna get our revenues and, and whether they come in fully. You know, it's not unusual for us to get letters from New York, you know, like, hey, three years ago, we looked at your, your state aid and we overpaid you $100,000, so we'll take 100 from you or, you know, whatever. And it's just, it's just a constant adjustment process. So, the, the variance in revenues could be an unfavorable variance that, but I, I feel reasonably confident that we'll end the year with a close to a $5.4 million fund balance. So, in summary, as I already mentioned, our budget increase of general aid is 1.9 million or 3.06%. Disappointed in our foundation aid, we're gonna continue to talk about that. And hopefully, something will, something will happen in, in the future that will either clarify the state aid formulas or, or fund them fully. And I'm hoping for the latter. Tax levy increase at the tax cap at 2.94%, increase of 2.5 million. This will require one, a simple majority, one more yes vote than no vote, and it will not impact negatively the rebate checks that our taxpayers would receive. The proposed budget includes revenues and expenditures of $163.2 million, which is about a $4.5 million increase or about 2.84%. And we're relying on fund balance, we continue to rely on fund balance. And so, we'll keep watching that closely. I want, I want people to know, and this is kind of a, one of the things, this is maybe just one example, this next bullet point, of things that happen in the budget process. You know, we, we spend so much time working on a lot of areas that we would like to spend money on and we have lots of conversations. I just use this one, or we use this one as an example. We spend a lot of time, we, we still are not, have not fully restored all the co-curricular activities we cut. And we really were hopeful that we were gonna be able to restore particularly some of the assistant coaches that are working with our teams. And the only thing we were able to get in the budget is a, we added a modified volleyball team. And that's the only addition, very modest. We just will hope that in future budgets, we'll be able to continue to work on that, that one area. There's an net increase of, forgive me, Jason, if I got that wrong, I thought it was about six positions, but I'll, I'll fix that if I got that wrong. But it's close to six positions. Everything was very much reconciled back to Vision 2020. You heard about the expanded course offerings tonight and the special needs inclusion and the English language learners is another area that we're, we're making sure we're in compliance with our requirements and supporting the students that are going to both of our locations that support English language learners at Allen Road and at Cicero L. And then the additional school psychologists to address some of the social emotional needs of our middle school students. And again, happy to report there were no layoffs included in the budget. So, that, that concludes our, our budget presentation. We, it's our hope that the board will adopt a budget tonight. And I mentioned our BOCs election, that's for the administrative costs for our BOCs budget. And we'll talk about that on the 16th, budget hearing on the 1st of May, and then the budget vote on the 15th. And the usual information regarding our vote and election information. Do you have any questions? Paul?
Want me to ask him to the people who presented?
Oh, yeah, sure.
This one's for Dan, I think, because I was paying attention to where he was talking. You were, the junior high and the middle schools, you had some .410 positions, I think, at the junior high, a couple of. Point twos at the middle schools. Great to add, are we, we have a mix, I'm assuming, of. Got a rough idea of what do we have and what do we need to get, especially in the area of the foreign language. We're losing .8 German, but that doesn't, they don't normally.
We, we do have a few people that are dual certified in, in world languages, which is very, very helpful for us. But with all of these points here, .2, .4, we actually sat down the other day, shared staffing meeting, because when you have many sections of Spanish in different locations, sometimes you can play with a .2 or a, a .4 here and there. So, the .8 in German, the class size there was very much lower than some of the other class sizes in either Spanish or French. So, you're able to absorb more of the students into some of those sections with those, with the world languages. If you go back to the art, health, and family and consumer science, you are 100% correct because it is extremely difficult in this day and age for facts, in particular, to find certain people in pieces of .2 or .4 in facts. So, oftentimes, these will be added to. So oftentimes, these will be added to point or part-time positions currently.
I'd like to add to that, too. Technology is another example. When we went through this kind of with a fine-tooth comb for the last time last week, we realized that we had a dangling part-time .2 technology teacher, and we had that happen once in the past, and through all kinds of recruitment efforts, even begging retirees, we were not able to fill. So, we talked with the principals, and through creative scheduling and maybe increasing class size a little bit, we were able to fill that .2. Because what happened last time, we spent all summer trying to recruit somebody, and then, end of August, we were not successful, and a building had to completely change schedule to work around it prior to school opening. So, all that's taken into consideration. We have a chart that we can share with all of you. It's too tiny and tedious for a presentation, but it does list every tenure area and where the staff, staffing falls within the building, so you'd be able to get your idea with that.
How about you speak, too, and I know we were contacted today, and I appreciate that, heads up. How we're within the class size. How, how close we are in some of those.
Well, for kindergarten, the guidelines that we're using is 22 and under, first and second, 24 and under, third and fourth, 26 and under, fifth and sixth, 27 and under. I only see currently two areas that are close to getting to those areas that are our thresholds. Other than that, all other class sizes are below, clearly below, the threshold, because we're trying to allow some capacity. Because, again, some of the areas over by Believers Chapel, Clay Town Hall, there is, there are people either changing or moving in, and we want to make sure that all students can go to their home school.
And I'll add to that, too. We, we start right after the Fourth of July, very closely monitoring those class sizes at the elementary, as people move, notify us that they're moving, and as people register and move in. So we look at that every week, every Tuesday morning, and, you know, make adjustments. And if need be, we will add a position here.
Any other questions or comments?
I, I just have some comments, just because, I mean, this is seven years of going through the process, and we've been talking about equitable foundation aid the entire time that I've been on the board and since beforehand. And I think one of our major, major obstacles is that we talk about it till we're blue in the face, starting in December, you know, and then we drop it right after the budget cycle ends. It's a continual conversation that needs to be had throughout the year. And, you know, as I say that, I'm also thinking to myself that, you know, remember the amount of money prior to you being around that we got in county sales tax that was taken away from us? So, the county and the state, we don't vote on that budget. We vote on the people who put that budget in front of us, but their budgets affect us as a school district in a huge way. And very unfortunately, people show up to our budget vote very upset about something that we have no control over. We're talking about equitable funding, we're talking about unfunded mandates. Jason talks about the PAR panel, which arguably is a great process, but it's costly, and it works in our district because of the collaboration that we have with our teachers' union, teachers' association. But I would be hard pressed to say that it works everywhere in New York State. There are areas that it's probably not working like it is here in central New York. So, you know, I mean, we go back to stuff like that, that, I mean, we're hiring two teachers that are valuable in our district, that might be hired someplace else, that are teachers that are not going in front of students someplace else. So the value here is not representative of what it is in other places. So, you know, I'm glad to see that our spending is increasing for student success, you know, but it's very upsetting to see that mental health services still, I mean, we're adding, but going back to Tony Broccoli days of the board, we're still not meeting the needs of our students. Very unfortunate. Not our fault. But I guess, the last thing is a question, and that is, due to the growth in those areas that we're talking about, you know, the northern areas of the district, do we have to consider redistricting some of our middle schools? Do we have to look at that process like we have in the past where we've cut people off and...
We're about, at least 300 different from Gillette with Rocks, and I know that was looked at, oh, I'm thinking it must have been about six or seven years ago, Dr. Melvin was looking at that and was exploring that, and if the, if the gap continues to widen, it'd be something that we have to pay attention to. Don and I really went through and are looking, was it 10, 15 years out, at the projections? And the one thing, it looks like there's a lot more building, but our overall enrollment over the last five to six years has not increased. We've actually lost, it's been a shift in location, but not totally people knew moving into the district, because our enrollment's about 84 to, well, 85, 20, last I saw. And back in the heydays, we were just slightly above 10,000, and we've lost 80 to 100 students a year, almost every year. But we're trying to see, are we going to, one, level off and come to a point where that's the bottom, and then we're going to start going up? And the Route 31 corridor is of great concern, because you can continue to go down towards Bridgeport area and also north of the post office, and there's just a lot of land there that I would anticipate in the next 10 to 15 years will continue to grow.
Just something that, just I thought of when I was listening. Did we get details on, I heard the...
Oh, yeah.
Was in the budget where they want...
Have to budget by building now.
Got to budget by building.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm just not up to speed completely on it, honestly.
It did pass.
Well, I don't know if you know, we do our budget, if Vince Love were here, he would tell you that when we do our budget, it's literally done by building, and we have the personnel broken out.
He would, it sounds like they, there's a trust issue here, or whatever they want, pending, and I think they're going to index poverty, make sure you're putting money...
But, I don't know any details. I know from talking with some of the legislators and other administrators, that is, that was passed in the budget. We are going to have to submit things that show building base, you know, building by building budgeting, and I think that they're, the purpose is so that they can make sure that people are being treated equitably, buildings are being treated equitably. My question is, they don't have enough people to handle, monitor now, and now we have another unfunded mandate, and who's going to be looking at this, but...
They have an equitable aid formula that they're not able to fill, but now they want to make sure we have our own little equitable distribution formula.
That is.
But, to be honest with you, I mean, that's, it doesn't sound like it's equitable as much as it is. Like, I think what they're looking for is that we're meeting the needs with it, based on student population versus saying, you know, one-third in this building, one-third in the next, and one-third in the...
I'm not sure what their guidelines are, we haven't seen anything, but we will definitely keep you informed because...
Absolutely.
Assuming we're going to be learning about it pretty quickly.
Oh, Mary?
I just want to say that I agree with what Patrick said. It's very startling, looking at your pie chart, how the taxpayers' portion for the tax levy is getting bigger and bigger every year. And to me, even the money that comes from the state is the taxpayer money. So, what the funding for our schools is all coming from the taxpayers. The state government does not have Money Tree in their backyard. So, and I just also want to say, I'm very happy to hear about the changes for the needs of our students, the new course offerings at the high school, and I thought it was a great presentation. But one more thing. With, every year, we see the bus proposal, and you had said one time before that when the debt from past purchases comes off, you know, that rolls off the books and it doesn't, it's not like our taxes keep going up and up based on these purchases.
Yep, that's, that's true. So, the way the tax cap works is it looks at the debt service, the local share of the debt service. So, when, when we don't need those payments anymore, they come out of the tax cap calculation, and they force the tax levy down.
And how, what is the, the period of time when that would come off the books?
So, on the buses?
Yes.
The buses are financed over five years. That's how we get our aid over a five-year period.
I want to thank Annette, and Don, and Dan, and Jason, and Don Luchinsky, and it's been a long process, and we've been involved in it every other Monday night, or Budget Committee, or whatever, but you guys live this thing every day. And to get this thing put together and whatever, we really appreciate it. Good job by all, so thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item three, comments from the audience. John Corulla. Boo. Let there be light. You know where the switch is, go right ahead, yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Well, I think she, she started when you got up, John, so, you're down to two minutes.
Forty seconds.
Yeah.
I get my technology ready here. So, there, can you hear me now?
Yeah.
All right. So, good evening, everybody, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak. Wow, they picked up fast. So, I'm going to speak a little bit out loud, in my thought process, about the budget. And I first want to start off, and I reiterate, I know this is hard work, is that we're trying to make ends meet at a time where ends don't generally meet. So I'm not, I'm not going after the work that was done, but I am, I am going to be very blunt in saying that if we continue to talk about the campaign for fiscal equity, we're going down the wrong path. That is a dead issue. We are never going to get that money. And in doing so, we, we're failing to recognize that we have a community that supports us. And then we tell them openly what we're dealing with, and all of our woes and our needs, that they've come to the table every time. And we have great expectation for our students, and for our teachers, and for our administrators, yet I feel that we fail to go to our community in a reasonable way with that same request. In the middle of the pack for spending, yet we're the largest suburban in Anadaga County, and we're the lowest, really, at the bottom of the barrel. And I pay attention to the conversations that come across, and, you know, I'm not, I'm not comfortable, I've lived here all my life, I went to school here, my kids go to school here. That is something that I know that we say we're not proud of, yet we have work to do to change that. And we've implored multiple times, multiple years, through white papers, through individual people coming to the board to say, we cannot continue down this path because it's a path to a dead end. We're seeing some of that come to fruition on the south side of our district. The Roxborough campus is in great need of social emotional services and mental health services, and additional staff. It's been mentioned multiple times, many years, through the first round of white papers, the issues are growing, and it's our responsibility, and I see veteran teachers who've been with us for many years who are at wits' end because the services that we were able to provide for kids and the new services that we need to are not here. So, we need, we need to find a revenue source, and if it's not coming from the state, it's not coming from the campaign for fiscal equity, it needs to be spoken out loud and very clearly to our community. The last piece, we have talked about the need for our counseling services. Our school counselors still have the highest caseload for all of Anadaga County. We see, they see more kids and try to meet their needs. Our school psychologists are frustrated because they're relegated to paperwork instead of dealing with people. Our OTPT and speech, their caseloads, have seen an environment where they're able to meet per IEP, but the present level of performance or the plops that we deal with, they're not getting where they need to. So, I want to thank you, I go back, but I'm not trying to be the Debbie Downer on this. I am telling you very clearly, and you don't, I know you all see it, but I've yet to hear that come from this conversation about the board presentation in two years. Thank you.
Thank you, John. 4A, Board Committee Reports, Comments, Anything from anybody? Committees, nothing, no? Nothing, any comments? Nothing, nothing new? Superintendent?
Just want to remind people about the Festival of the Arts to be held this Saturday from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, at North Syracuse High School. It always features wonderful artwork and performances by students from all of our schools, and so we hope to see you.
Thank you. Item five, Routine Action Items. 5A, Consideration of Approval of the Minutes of the Regular Meeting of the Board of Education on March 26, 2018. B, Consideration of the Classification and School Placement of Disabled Students, Certified by the District Committee on Special Education. C, Consideration of Classification and Placement of Preschool Disabled Students, Certified by the District Committee on Preschool Education. And D, Consideration of Contract Award, Transportation Overhead Doors. On that one, the low bidder was Wayne Dalton of Syracuse, 31,200, to replace our doors at the transportation buildings. Any comment on that, Don, at all, or pretty clean it looks?
No, it's, it's pretty straightforward. We're working on, on changing those old doors out. They're heavy, they're hard to move, and they're, they're long overdue for replacement. So we've been systematically working our way through the garage facility.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead, Paul, yeah.
I'm always shocked when I see that, those kinds. We're all bidding on the same spec.
So I'll take a motion to approve 5A, B, C, and D as a group. Ms. Scanlon, Mr. Harrington, all in favor? Six, Discussion Action Items. A, Formal Adoption of the 2018-19 School District Budget. This is a roll call vote. The motion is that the Board of Education hereby approves and adopts the proposed 2018-19 budget in the amount of 163,20980, and directs that the following resolution shall be placed on the ballot for the May 15, 2018 vote. Shall the proposed 2018-19 budget for the North Syracuse Central School District in the amount of 163,20980 approved by the Board of Education on April 12, April 2, 2018 be adopted? Roll call vote. Connie? Oh, motion, yeah, it'd be a good idea, wouldn't it? Somebody want to make this motion? Okay, Mr. Leon? Nothing on this side, we'll go back over here. Ms. Scanlon? Okay. Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Motion carried. Eight zero. Thank you. Special Meeting of the Board of Education for May 29. This is a motion to approve a special meeting of the Board of Education for May 29, 2018, at 7:00 PM, for the purpose of receiving an update from Dr. William Silky, facilitator for the North Syracuse Central School District Swimming Pool Advisory Committee. Is there a motion to hold that special meeting? Mr. Leon, Mr. Frifalia, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Approval of the 18-19 District Calendar. Annette?
So we bring this to you after my calendar...
So, we bring this to you after my calendar committee, which is made up of... Been a long time looking at this. It's a different calendar. Date testing and region testing goes later next year, so we go later into June. But we were able to work together and compromise a bit, some features. We'll be having two superintendents conference days prior to the students arriving, but the first of those days will be on Thursday, August 30th, the second, the Tuesday, with students starting on the Wednesday after the... And I know the students will love this, and so will the teachers, two weeks off at the holiday break. My favorite part, I still have six snow days to play with.
Hallelujah.
So, we're asking the board, we're recommending that the board adopt this calendar, so that we can get it out.
Okay, motion to approve the calendar, please. Mr. Subota, Mr. Murizio, all in favor. Carried. D, Recommendation to Abolish a 37.5-hour-per-week teacher aid position and Create a 20-hour-per-week teacher aid position at the district office. Jason, any comments on that? Pretty clean?
Pretty straightforward. We reevaluated the duties, because the current employee is leaving the position, and we looked at what the needs are, and a lot of it has to do with testing, and we're moving to computer-based testing, so some of the requirements of the job have shifted, and this adjustment reflects that.
No layoff involved? You're just in between people, you're going to change the position?
No.
Motion to approve that recommendation? Mr. Fafalia, Ms. Scanlon, all in favor. AMF Bowling Centers versus Town of Salina. Oh, this is a resolution to authorize the settlement with AMF Bowling Centers. Bottom line is, we have to pay a refund of not to exceed $7,000 to settle this tax issue proceeding. Motion to approve this. Mr. Harrington, Mr. Leon, Connie? Aye.
Yes. S?
Yes.
Yes.
And acknowledgement of a gift. Central New York Women's Bar, I think there should be association, donated $100 to Main Street Early Education Program to go towards the Read Across America event. So, we have a motion to accept that gift with gratitude. Mr. Leon and Ms. Scanlon, all in favor. Personnel, 7A instructional personnel, 7B support staff personnel. Any questions? Need for discussion? Okay, motion to approve 7A and 7B together? Mr. Fafalia, Mr. Subota, all in favor. Motion for Executive Session. If I can get there. There it goes. Motion to move into Executive Session for the purpose of reviewing three legal matters relative to potential litigation, and to review the employment history of three individuals with no action to follow. Motion to approve. Mr. Harrington, Mr. Murizio, all in favor. So, move to Executive Session. All of you seniors come out forward?